Could you please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting of Bowling Green City Council. We're very pleased that you're here this evening. Thanks for coming. Kay, would you please begin by calling the roll?
Osbacher, Gordon, Harold, Jeffers, Robinette, Roland, Zanfordino.
The minutes of the meeting that was held on June 4th, 2018 were distributed to council prior to this meeting, and I would draw your attention to the amended version that was received by council early this afternoon. I would ask if there are any additions or corrections to these minutes. See, none is a motion to approve.
Some moved.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The minutes are approved as presented. Kay, do we have correspondence this evening?
Yes, I have two items from the finance director, Brian Bouchong, a listing of budget transfers to be made for this month. Those were distributed to you prior to the meeting for your approval.
Is there a motion to approve the budget transfers?
Some moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. The budget transfers are approved as presented.
And I also distributed to you prior to the meeting the financial budget summary report for the month of May 2018, and that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Kay. We'll move on to our special recognitions. I am aware that we have a couple of special recognitions that will be conducted by Mayor Edwards.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled, and tonight I'm going to say all the folks in television land. I'm always surprised bumping into someone and said, gee, I was watching you at, now mentioned some ungodly hour, because WBGU does replay these broadcasts and at interesting times, let's put it that way. Jerry, not prime time, so we don't, but tonight you probably sense there's a celebrity in the house, and all of us are really important, but this guy is really very important, and somehow he's handled it all rather beautifully throughout this whole weekend. And we declared Jerry Anderson Day in Bowling Green on Friday, Ohio, and I hope he felt some extra sensations and so forth when he got off. It's already his last day at WTOL Television, and, but we've been really looking forward to this occasion to honor Jerry Anderson and Terry, and so we have, the resolution I'm about to read might sound a little anticlimactic, but Clint, you know, I've listened to you all this morning, and you said, this is really a warm-up for your broadcast tomorrow morning when you're going to have a special guest at 7:30 a.m. and to? Well, I'll let you tell the rest of the story then, so I don't want to steal your thunder there, but, but in any event, I'm going to ask at this time, and we're so pleased that Jerry and Terry could make time in their, their schedule, their new schedule right now. If you look closely at Jerry, you'll see that maybe he's already starting to take this retirement thing very, very seriously, because I sent some there. So Jerry and Terry, would you please come forward, and I'm going to ask that you be joined by, kind of in succession here, I've got, you know, we have to have a supporting cast for these kinds of things, right? And so Bill Blair, would you please come forward, because I'm calling these the, the broadcast voices of Bowling Green. How about that? Okay, Bill Blair, and you can tell when you served on, on radio and set the stage for Jerry.
Well, I, I left WFBOB to go to WAWR at the time, radio station to do university football with Frank Hillholy, and there was this young man whose father owned an implement dealership, decided he didn't want to sell tractors, so he came up and to WFBOB and took my place with Jerry Anderson. So that was the first time that I had met Jerry. Just a second. That's Mel Murray. He says there is TV in habit.
Okay, Bill, now I'm going to ask another, one of the broadcast voices of Bowling Green, a long run on the air, Dave Horder, would you please come forward?
Oh, people get it out. It's Dave Horder. Mel's not going to call you again, because I don't think he's going to hire you again.
Okay, Dave, any more that you'd like to say before we?
Well, you know, there is one thing. Now that I have, now that I have your attention and council's attention, something I'd like to bring to you. Jerry worked at WFBOB from 1974 to 1978, right, four years. I worked at WFBOB beginning of 19, he knows where I'm going. I worked in Bowling Green from 1979 until 2013, not at WFBOB, but we did, we were successful in making it more of a BG studio, and then we started, you know, the IDE Point One with Clint, and are we getting some TV time here?
I think so. Never turn your back to the cameras, though.
I worked in Bowling Green Radio from 1979 until 2013, so Jerry worked four years at BG Radio. I worked 34 years at BG Radio, and to this point, I don't believe there has ever been a Dave Horder day.
Well, David, I understand we wouldn't have this day if that's bad for the 4 to 3 vote by council.
And now I'm going to ask to come forward here, Clint Corp, because the current voice of Bowling Green Radio. Clint, would you please come forward? Would you care to say anything?
Nothing at all.
You're saving it all for tomorrow, right?
Tomorrow morning, 7:30 to 8:00, I sweet-talk Jerry into coming by and spending some time with us, and I thought who better to have in studio than this gentleman right here, who certainly led the way and built the morning show from the ground up at the Vision in order to put that together, and we're all riding on the coattails of giants today. I warned Jerry when he came in and Terry that we've got some surprises for him tomorrow morning, so gird your hoins, my friend.
But Dave, you were awarded the Spirit of Bowling Green Award. Don't speak volumes. Just, just cool down. I like to see you speechless, so, okay. Well, Jerry and Terry, we are really honored and pleased to have this opportunity to say thank you for all that you've done for our community, all your years, and of, I know you've, you've from time to time have nubbed some, your colleague, nudged some of your colleagues up there in Toledo and say, well, you know, you better check with the folks in, in Bowling Green and do this and that, because they tell me that, too, from time to time, they would say. So we're grateful, all that you've done for our community, and, and the fact that you're back home, and you opted, you could be living in probably most any place you wanted to and so forth, but the fact that you really, truly, and sincerely wanted to come back home. And, and so I, I had the great honor of knowing your mom and dad, and, wow, they would be so incredibly proud of you, and of course Terry, I know your family as, as well, and so this seems a little bit strange for a print-type guy to be, you know, reading something to someone who's a legend in broadcasting, and so you're going to have to bear with me here a little bit, but I'm going to ask my, my three good friends, I hope they're still good friends here, that do what we do with the children in our schools when we go around and do proclamations and so forth, so you're going to have to help me with the words whereas. When I hold up, I want the three of you to say, you got to work for something tonight, so you got to say, you know, I'm going to say the first whereas, then I'll hold up my hand and you can say the rest then, so. So again, keep in mind that this was to set the stage for last Friday, and when we had that very special day in Bowling Green, including Firefly Night in Bowling Green. What a fun time it was to be in downtown, and I know you had a special family celebration in downtown Bowling Green on Friday, on Friday night. So whereas, whereas Jerry Anderson has spent 44 years reporting the news in award-winning career that began with WFBOB Radio in Bowling Green in 1974, and
Whereas.
You guys might make it. Jerry has become a regional celebrity with WTOL, an association that has earned him numerous awards and nominations, including seven Emmys, two Edward R. Merrell Awards, two Crystal Awards of Excellence, and most recently his induction into the Ohio Association, Associated Press Hall of Fame, and
Whereas.
During his storied career, Jerry has covered four national political conventions, three presidential inaugurations, a visit by Pope John II, countless national news stories, including his award-winning 18-part series following the 9/11 attack titled Families Coping, and
Whereas.
Throughout his career, Jerry has always been mindful of his roots in Bowling Green, and is an unabashed townie, a passionate BGHS bobcat, Francis Scucci, did you hear that? Okay, and a BGSU Falcon, and
Whereas.
Jerry has been totally unselfish in his support of the BG Parks and Recreation Foundation, BG Little League Baseball, the Black Swamp Arts Festival, and a never-ending array of other community-focused activities as a master of ceremonies and celebrity auctioneer, not only in Bowling Green and Toledo, but throughout Wood County and Northwest Ohio, and, this is the last one, guys, make it strong, come on.
Whereas.
Okay, Jerry and his wife Terry can now celebrate his retirement and the next chapter of their lives by spending more time with their three children and two grandchildren, and pursuing special interests and hometown activities. Now therefore, I, Richard A. Edwards, Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, do hereby proclaim ex post facto, June 15th, 2018, as Jerry Anderson Day in this municipality, and join with Jerry his family and colleagues at Channel 11, and his countless fans, I mean countless fans everywhere you go, in this celebration of his retirement. And Jerry and Terry, I just want to congratulate you both and share this proclamation with you, and, you know, unlike Mayor Kappa Zouich, I cannot, which reminds me of the Toledo Zoo. That's, that's Toledo city politics, right?
That's, that's the word.
Okay, but I, I can't present you with one of those magnificent keys to the city, those very expensive things like, you probably have several, but I do have, very pleased to present you with a pin.
I hope I didn't screw up productivity in Bowling Green last Friday, because last week when we heard we were going to do this, I went on the air and said, it's Jerry Anderson Day on the 15th of June, y'all take the day off in Bowling Green. And I said, no way, before you do that, I'm going to, I gave everybody a raise and then said, take the day off. But yeah, we did come up, my kids, it was just great. They had a dinner for us up at the, rented that back part of Sam Bee's, and so then we walked outside and there were hundreds of people and bands playing, and I looked at my daughters who were from out of town, and I said, look what Bowling Green did. You can't beat this stuff. I believe I covered city council meeting in this room when I covered Bowling Green News, in the same room.
Oh, yeah.
And then, and then I just had the privilege of sitting through whatever that was before. There was a discussion of the wording of the preamble of the city charter, where some, what were you guys just doing here?
That was it, yes.
Are you, are you sure? Because if I had to do too many meetings like that, I'm surprised I would have stayed in News. But yeah, and WFBOB was a great place. Blabs Bill had, had preceded me there. I got to work with Dave Carr. Every morning at 8:30, we had the news of Bowling Green, Wood County in the area, brought to you by Dick Wilson, Potiak Buick, GMC and Subaru, 1099 North Main Street in Bowling Green. The sponsor mention was longer than my first story, so a lot of times the first story was Bob Smith got stopped for speeding on Maple Street. At 10 o'clock, we had, at 10:15, no, 9:55, right before the 10 o'clock, we had the Wood County Hospital Report, brought to you by Dorsey's Drugs, now with two locations in Font Doria and Bowling Green. And I would literally read the, admitted to the hospital yesterday, discharged from the hospital yesterday, and any children that were born. That constituted the Wood County Hospital Report, that I mentioned was brought to you by Dorsey's Drugs, now with two locations. I was so convinced that nobody was listening to this, that one morning I decided I had the sentinel there, I mean, I saw the, this goes back to the comic strips of the time, and I went ahead and had twins born to Nancy and Sluggo of Signet, and I discharged Private Beetle Bailey of Wayne, Ohio. Nobody called. Nobody called convincing me that nobody was listening to the Wood County Hospital Report. When I mentioned on the other, the other day what this young lady saw in a $100 a week, and I was telling my son-in-law, he goes, Jerry, he's a deep voice, Jerry, I know there's inflation and everything, but really, $100 a week? And I said, well, that was before taxes. And I've told groups, there's one thing good about poverty, they don't tax it real heavily. I took, I got paid every Friday, I took home $82.86, and, and somehow lived on it, and, and she hung with me anyway. And I'm right over at St. Mark's, and this fall we'll have 38 years together, so it is just an honor for me. And, and yes, I was only here four years, but even in Toledo TV, you have to admit, I've been carrying the water for Bowling Green and BGSU, and doing it up there where there's another school. You know, I'm referring to Owens. So when we decided to do our downsized a few years ago, we lived for 17 years up here in Middleton Township on Reed's Road, Perrysburg Marling Address, but Middleton Township was our government, and it was just, we, we talked about it, we looked around, it was just no question, we're going back to Bowling Green. My wife was raised here, Ridge School, now a park, the old junior high, now kind of a park. And gosh, I'd like to see us get a new high school, but yeah, she, she led the way through. After my sophomore year in high school, we moved back to BG, and I only wish we had done it years earlier, and so for us, it was like, we're, we're going back to BG, and it's unbelievable, in August, in a couple of months, we'll, we'll be here five years, again, that it has just flown by, so. Right on Ashbury Hills, I told, especially when I moved in out there, I told all my people up at the station, I said, boy, if you ever want to feel younger, move into Ashbury Hills, we're like the new kids on the block. So, but we're deeply honored, and no, we have, I'm looking forward to getting back. I never left Kiwanis Club, I just can't go to the lunches on this current schedule. Now I can, but I've been paying my dues and working the, the pancake breakfast, I, I love that, the Bowling Green Park and Recreation Foundation, y'all need to be at the wine and cheese, Fourth Friday of September, and everything else that we do in this community. This is just a great town, and I am so honored to receive this, and thank you so much, Mayor Edwards, I really appreciate it. Thank you all very much.
7:30 in the morning, play show.
Somebody might be a roast.
I think they rehearsed this.
And thank you, Bill.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Clint.
And now, Mr. President, members of council, I have another high honor here to present a proclamation on behalf of some very special members of our community this evening, and I've often said that as a community, we should all take pride in our long history of inclusiveness, the establishment of the Not in Our Town movement in Bowling Green, and the longstanding ongoing work of the Human Relations Commission, and the Anti-Discrimination Ordinance, Chapter 39, all of those things, and we could add to it. We should all take pride in, in those very important elements of our community. Tonight, I'm going to ask two representatives of the LGBT community, Gwen Andricks and Cynthia Mahaffey, to come forward. I'm also going to ask, because I think there are a few folks here representing Not in Our Town, I know that Emily Dunne Pace is here, and Julie Broadwell, and Holly Sepriani, all three of them, they're in the back, we're, I'm going to ask that you come forward, too, in this presentation, and then we have representatives of the Human Relations Commission, and we're, tonight we were honored to have the, the co-chair of our Human Relations Commission, the Reverend Mary Jane Saunders, and others from the Human Relations Commission. And when I said Not in Our Town about the three persons that identified here, the Reverend Gary Saunders really has played a, a huge role in representing community interests in the Not in Our Town movement, and Gary, even though you've stepped back a little bit, you're still very, very much involved, and we're grateful, grateful for that, for your leadership. So if, if, I'm just going to ask Gwen and Cynthia, if you would please come forward, and, and if we could all gather in up here, and representatives from Not in Our Town, if you would please come forward, and the Human Relations Commission, so we can, I'm going to... And I should note here, Julie, yep, just hold up your hand there, because you have been serving in such an important role here, and as a community representative in the Not in Our Town movement, and, and then we're so grateful that Emily Dunne Pace, a real townie, been in California for many years, came back here a number of years and doing some, just some absolutely wonderful work for Wood Lane, and have a strong presence in the community, and we're so grateful for your leadership there. And Holly Sepriani, also the same thing, you've been involved in more ways than one can really begin to identify here, and your involvements here, so. Here's our resolution, members of council and all assembled. Whereas LGBT pride refers to a global movement and philosophy asserting that all people, regardless of sexual orientation or identity, should be proud of who they are instead of what they are. And whereas the city of Bowling Green has a long history of inclusiveness and welcoming and is fortunate to be a diverse community, including LGBT residents. And whereas Bowling Green actively celebrates this diversity through Not in Our Town and the Human Relations Commission, two organizations actively working to promote equality, inclusiveness, and understanding of all people. And whereas, as part of these efforts, Bowling Green has taken a proactive stance on enacting laws that protect against discrimination, and I referred to it before, Chapter 39 of the Bowling Green Codified Ordinances, as well as passing resolutions condemning violence, hate speech, and proclaiming our community as safe and welcoming for all. And whereas June is National Pride Month to commemorate events that occurred in New York City in 1969, that is believed to be the beginning of the gay liberation movement in the United States. Now therefore, I, Richard A. Edwards, Mayor of the City of Bowling Green, do hereby proclaim June 2018 as LGBT Pride Month in this municipality, and encourage all residents to stand together with our LGBT neighbors to live out the Human Relations Commission and Not in Our Town ideals of celebrating diversity and welcoming all, regardless of sexual orientation or identity. And so with that, I'm very pleased to present this to you, Gwen. Thank you so much.
I might get to say something. I'm really proud of my community. I've lived here now for five years, and I can't tell you how safe and welcome I feel in this community. I can pretty much go wherever I want, and I'm accepted for who I am, and that means the world. So thank you very much.
Mr. President, members of council, that concludes our special recognitions.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We will move forward on our agenda to lobby visitation. Kay, is there anyone who has signed up to address council this evening?
The first person is Les Barber.
Thank you. If you have signed up, we ask that you approach the microphone and clearly state your name and address for the record. You know the drill.
Les Barber, 303 North Prospect Street, and a member of the most recent Charter Review Commission. This is moving from happy events to, back to more serious business, but I want to talk a little bit about the proposed amendment to the charter concerning the planning department. And I have to say that I was really disappointed when I learned just this morning that critical language in the Charter Review Commission's recommendation had been stripped away. It's really pretty upsetting to me, and that's one of the reasons why I'm probably going to read what I've written here, to make sure that I say it as clearly and accurately as I was able to, to write it. Frankly, I had expected better from the city government. I had thought, wrongly it turns out, that you would embrace any reasonable action which might have a chance of saving our city from some future decline caused by economic or social change that might be anticipated, could be anticipated, by a focused professional planning department. Instead, what it seems to me that we have is a kind of, this will sound harsh, so, you know, I guess I don't exactly apologize, but I'm sensitive to this, but it seems to me that what we have here is a kind of bureaucratic defensive resistance to change, as best I can understand the reasons. Anyhow, substantively, something, something notable that's been missing in the city charter since it was first created in 1970s is, first of all, any mention of the planning department or planning director at all. Secondly, and more importantly, there's been no, no definition of its essential and inviolable role in Bowling Green city government. It's just not been there. The omitted language in the text of Ordinance 8689 represented one form that definition could take, and its removal is a blow, not just to the Charter Review Commission itself, which recommended that language to you, but to the many citizens of Bowling Green who believed that the planning function of our city was ineffective for many long years. And you've heard some of this before, but it has to be said again. It's been almost 50 years since BGSU changed its policy and allowed an upperclassman to live off campus. The results of that decision have been devastating to single-family neighborhoods on the east side of Bowling Green, Bowling Green, including significant areas west of Main Street, I might add. Various citizens began warning city administrators and city councils as early as the 1970s about what was happening to former single-family homes as they were converted into student rental units, the earliest ones with virtually unrestricted occupancy levels. But at that time, there was no, in my opinion, there was no truly professional planning function in the city, and citizens' warnings fell on largely deaf ears for decades. It is reflective of how little weight was given to serious planning in the 1970s and after, that the commission, which wrote the original Bowling Green City Charter and subsequent review commissions, did not find it important to even mention a planning department or a planning director. The result has been what you all today, I think, have finally recognized, and we're happy about this, it's a good thing, that a blight, there's a blight on large sections of the older part of Bowling Green, accompanied by economic decay which has affected the entire city. The lack of attention to planning issues and enforcement that has negatively affected the east side of Bowling Green for these 50 years ought to be adequate evidence that the position and importance of the planning department needs to be strengthened. It needs to be made more visible, it needs to be made more important in people's, including city government's minds, so that similar, or more likely different, negative forces on city neighborhoods are not allowed to wreak destruction in the future. That's the important thing. In the absence of any mention of planning or its functions in our charter, the city's planning functions are guided only by what is stated in the Ohio Revised Code. Unfortunately, the code does little more than outline a variety of rather mechanical functions, like reviewing, plat- functions, like reviewing plaits and issuing zoning permits, et cetera. We need more than that, and in my opinion, we need more than that, and we need to have it stated as principle, really, in the city charter. In my view, we are fortunate to now have in Bowling Green a professional planning director who has been trained to anticipate trends and potential dangers, but she and her successors need the full support and commitment of city government, something that would be more fully visible and recognizable if defining language were included in the city charter. And it seems to me, this is not a matter of job description. We're not talking about job description here. That's something that's rightly left to Section 30 of so-called Administrative Code of the Revised Ordinances of Bowling Green. Rather, it's a matter of principle, of articulating the minimum responsibility that every Bowling Green citizen has a right to expect from our city government, specifically, in this case, the planning department, to protect the integrity of our community, its neighbors, its neighborhood, and other areas. So I want to urge you basically to restore the language, the defining language. I don't care so much about, this is a phrase early, early on about appointment, I don't care so much about that, but the defining language. I urge you to restore that to the commission. That's a substantive thing. There's one quick minor thing, the phrase indefinite term, mayor appoints for indefinite term, that phrase appears in both the description of the finance director and the law director. So, it's, whether it's there or not, doesn't matter so much to me, but just for your information. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barber.
Mr. President, I'd like to comment, if I may. Les Barber's a really good man, so I've learned, learned from him. And as we've discussed and argued various neighborhood issues, it's been very informative, and I appreciate it. And I don't want to argue everything that you just said, but I do have one very serious disagreement with you. I think we have taken planning seriously, and long before I came along on council, there was lots of planning going on. All the neighborhood issues are not resolved in Bowling Green like they're not resolved in almost all college towns that I have any knowledge of. But, what I really want to say is I think that our planning department does a very good job. I think we have an excellent planning director, and I know you were not attacking Heather by any means, but I think we've, we've had two detailed studies with professional planners, the land use plan and the cap, and they don't make everything, you know, perfect overnight, and I know you know that, but I, I guess my main point is that I, I feel very strongly that we are taking planning seriously, and very importantly, the chief planner is the mayor. If we had a mayor that didn't care about planning, it wouldn't really matter what the director said, and people will elect mayors that, that care about planning. Mayor Edwards, from, from the, from day one, he was ahead of, of all of us on council, and working towards ways to, to think about the corridor development, and working with the university, and that, that started to include housing, along with a lot of other development things, but, I'm just being redundant, but I, I think we, we take it seriously, and I think we're doing a lot of good work, and I'm not sure that this, in the charter, helps that much, people will think about that further, but I just wanted to say that.
Thanks, Bruce.
Next person is Mark Hollenbaugh.
Mark Hollenbaugh, 315 Parkview Drive, number 92. I would like to add my praise to Heather as the planning director, and to the many fine-looking people that are on the planning commission. I didn't attend the last meeting, but thankfully, I was able to watch it on YouTube, because it's on YouTube now. And as I watched the last meeting, I heard a lot of comments, over and over again, that our intent is to accurately reflect the will of the Charter Review Committee. Tonight, as I've sat here, I've heard a lot more "but, but, but." I would like to add my voice to Les, in the sense that I feel that this language that was put forward by the Charter Review Committee is important language, and I think it signifies a commitment going forward by the city. You can find 1,000 reasons not to include this language, but I ask you to, please try to find a reason to include it. One other thing I'd like to say, and I've already made my thoughts known to you all, but with regard to the veterans' credit, I have here the, the copy that we voted off of when we voted to send these to you. And the language that we voted on says, "to reduce the veterans' credit from 20% to 10%." And when Shannon initially presented to you, guys, our results, that's how she reported it as well. So, I, I would ask that when it comes to the ballot language, that you consider wording it in a way that it accurately reflects to the voter that this is a change from 20% to 10%, and not just put 10%, because I feel that that's misleading to the voters. So in the sake of transparency, for people that don't know Ohio Revised Code, I would ask that you consider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
That's all.
Great. Thank you both for your comments. Next item on our agenda is the introduction of new legislation.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jeffers.
From the Finance Committee, I have an ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Bowling Green, Ohio, during the fiscal year, beginning January 1st, 2018, and ending December 31st, 2018. I have an ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment. An ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and utilities director to sell obsolete items no longer needed for municipal purposes by public auction and declaring an emergency.
Thank you, Bruce.
Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Rollins.
I have a resolution from the Parks and Recreation Committee. Resolution authorizing the City of Bowling Green to participate in the local park improvement grant program, and to file an application and accept grant funding upon grant application approval.
Thank you, Sandy. The next item on our agenda is our official reports. Mayor Edwards.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, members of council and all assembled. I just have a brief statement this evening, and I'm going to, to read it here, and it reflects a, a visit that several of us were involved with today, President Osbacher and I, along with Mike Fields, the head of our water treatment plant, the superintendent of our water treatment plant, so, just bear with me, because I want to make sure that I get the, the very basic points here and not be misunderstood. This morning, Council President Mike Osbacher and I, along with Superintendent of the Bowling Green Water Treatment Plant, Mike Fields, met with the Ohio Environmental Protection Director, Craig Butler, and key members of his staff, including Shannon Neighbors, Director of the Northwest Ohio Regional EPA, located in Bowling Green, for an onsite briefing of the Nexus Maumee River Crossing Drilling Site on the Lucas County side of the river. The briefing was conducted by the Nexus construction team specifically related to the horizontal directional drilling technology and related timeline, with an emphasis on safety and compliance. The first stage of the river crossing is well underway, and involves drilling a small diameter pilot hole along a designed directional path. According to the engineering staff, there are no surprises or impediments to date, and the project is proceeding in keeping with the plan scheduled. We had ample opportunities to ask questions, along with Director Butler and his staff, including the state's lead geologist, Harry Capoletis. All of the 39 conditions as outlined in the FERC approval document, and I'm, you've seen me hold this up before, but it's something that I keep pretty much close at hand, but all the tabs in here, 39, 39 conditions. As outlined in the FERC approved document, and in response to questions raised, and I'm going to emphasize, questions raised by Bowling Green are being addressed. In addition to the constant monitoring by the Ohio EPA, we also met with a FERC onsite compliance officer. In summary, the project is now in the hands of the federal and state compliance agencies, namely FERC and the Ohio EPA, with 24/7 response capability being provided by EPA's Northwest Regional Office in Bowling Green, and by its Director, BGSU graduate Shannon Neighbors. And Mike, in case I possibly have missed something, feel free to add to it, I know Mike Fields is not with us here, but we were very eager to have Mike Fields involved, because he obviously runs the day-to-day operations of our water treatment plant, and is one of the most knowledgeable persons when it comes to the quality of our water there. And I know that he is monitoring the situation very, very closely, but I hope I haven't missed any, any of the salient points.
No, Mayor, Mayor, thank you. I do think that your statement very accurately reflects our experience today. I would just say, from my perspective, I was very much impressed with the degree of oversight that's being afforded to this project. It was clear that our concerns were heard by, most clearly, by the Ohio EPA. It was emphasized today to us that, since the beginning of the project, which I believe started about four weeks ago, Ohio EPA inspectors and FERC inspectors have been onsite roughly every other day, and they're responsible for not only, you know, inspecting and monitoring the conditions of the work as it occurs, but they're also creating detailed reports that are being forwarded to the Ohio EPA and being reviewed by, or being reviewed by the geological staff and other members of the staff down there, so that they would be able to detect anything that would be considered out of the norm for this type of process. And they emphasize very clearly that they have not seen anything out of the norm as they have begun their work, and that was reinforced by Mike Fields, who mentioned to us that he is monitoring the condition of the incoming water, and has seen nothing out of the norm since the, since the work has begun. So to me, all of these things were very encouraging, and it's clear to me that Ohio EPA is following through on their commitment to provide the oversight that we requested, based on our concerns, so I'm really, pretty much, I'm very highly encouraged, you know, by the progress of the work and the oversight that's being provided.
Thank you very much, Mike. I, I, as you know, I asked some very, very pointed questions about the Rover Project, and frankly, the disasters that took place in southeastern Ohio with the Trescarawas River. And, and I asked specifically, well, what have you learned from, from this? And I think the answer was, we've learned a whole bunch. And, and also, they were very reassuring in saying, the work on this project is being done an entirely different way, a more responsible way than what we saw occurring down there, that we had to step in and levy heavy fines and, and play a heavy-handed role in that whole project. Frankly, it's been a mess down there. So, everyone seems to be aware of what, what happened down there, what went wrong, and I like to think they've learned a lot from that, that whole process. I also, not that I'm trying to justify Bowling Green's position in any, any way at all, but I know that Craig Butler, the Director of the Ohio EPA, has been very complimentary in a sense of way we proceeded here, with our in-depth discussions, reviews, having very analytical, various analytical reports presented, and several initiatives on the part of citizen groups and so forth, that played out in an entirely different way than what we saw maybe over in, in eastern Ohio there, especially in the Akron Canton area there, and where they went a different route, and they lost on every point, and they spent a huge amount of money trying to, to defend their, their case, and it's unfortunate, it's tragic, but they weren't able to get, we were heard. Every time I go through this document, I think back of our discussions, our public forums, the testimony by, by experts in the, in the field, and the questions that were raised by citizens and by these experts, and that that have been incorporated into that report, so it's, it's helped me a little bit in, in my comfort zone there, in the sense, and in my best hopes that this is going to be done correctly. But I'm especially pleased with Shannon Neighbors and the 24/7 system that they have in place, and their willingness to respond quickly and promptly and thoroughly, so any questions raised, so.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mayor Edwards?
Mr. President, I just have a comment, and I wanted to thank you and commend you, Mayor, for your dedication, drive, and diligence in following this. And also, when I heard that Council President Mike Osbacher was going to be representing us, it was like, this is a great example of how council functions best when it has varying backgrounds and experiences. To have Mike Osbacher there, in his hard hat, with his experience and background, it's comforting to know that you're both involved and monitoring it, so, thank you, Mike.
Thank you very much. Phil was very thoughtful, and he, I can assure you, he was totally in, on the construction side, and I was in more on the public policy issue side, where you would expect, but it was so comforting to have Mike there, not only for his expertise in construction, and of course, to have Mike Fields there as well, and I'm grateful to Lori Treter and others that made that possible, to have Mike be able to join with us, so.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Thank you.
We appreciate it very much. Municipal Administrator, Ms. Treter.
Are there questions for Lori?
Mr. President, I just have a comment for Lori. Lori, I want to thank you and the administration for working so diligently with the organizers of Firefly Night. That was quite an event, quite a celebration in downtown Bowling Green Friday night, and I am very thankful for you and Joe, and the work you did to, to make this all possible. Of course, it couldn't have happened without the City of Bowling Green, but it also couldn't have happened without you being so cooperating and, or so cooperative in working with the organizers, so let's hope this is just the beginning of a lot of summer nighttime fun on Friday nights in downtown Bowling Green. Thank, thank you very much. Many of them were in support of it, yes, yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, Lori. Planning Director, Ms. Saylor.
Good evening. I don't think I've been here since we attended the International Town Gown Association Annual Conference. It was actually their highest attendance, which was great, over the years they've been doing this. Our two presentations went very well. Lori was there, we had a group from BGSU, and I think the message is that relationships take a lot of work, they're not perfect, but certainly BG and BGSU are very highly regarded and have a lot of successful partnerships, but we continue to work on several, several issues. We're also still busy preparing the Ohio Town and Gown Summit. We have the latest and greatest schedule. This should be just about it, but everybody is welcome to attend this. I think it's really special that it's here in Bowling Green and being hosted at BGSU. We have four tracks, sustainability, economic development, public safety and health, and, excuse me, public safety, health, quality of life in neighborhoods. We're having well over 40 presenters between all those sessions. We also, on Friday, is our day, we're going to spend it in the Union Ballroom with several keynote folks, hot topics, medical marijuana, potential impacts on college towns, along with a professor at the university talking about higher education, and how the demographics are greatly going to impact higher education, and how do we focus as a host city, and how do they refocus their efforts? So, I'm really excited about that, so I, I believe some of you can attend. Again, it's welcome to everyone, you can check Um, the next sites, um, future, uh, summits will be announced at the conference, which is exciting always, and then in July, we will have no zoning board of appeals, just so you know, that announcement didn't go out yet, and also, since planning commission falls on July 4th, it will not be a July meeting, but we will still have a meeting on August 1st. So, that's it, unless you have any questions.
Questions for Heather.
This, this document, is that part of that email that you, a couple days ago, or is it available?
Yes, but it is ever-changing, to be honest with you, so that is the latest and greatest in your hands. We just have a couple outstanding, um, presenters that we're waiting to hear back from, but otherwise, the topics are solidified, um, not much to change in that respect, so. And it's very affordable, it's $35, and, um, I, you know, it's just, it's great, we have people from all over the state presenting, along with our own local folks, but I think it's a really good mix of topics, so.
Great. Thank you, Heather.
You're welcome.
Appreciate all your hard work. Parks and Recreation Director, Ms. Ottley.
Everything is in full swing, and there's just far too much going on for me to even pinpoint certain things, so I really don't have a report unless you have questions to make.
Other questions for Kristen?
I rode through the park today on my bicycle, it looks wonderful. Park looks really great, yep, very busy. Yep, very busy, a lot of people in there enjoying the park. Great job.
City Attorney, Mr. Marsh. Questions for Mr. Marsh? Thank you. That concludes our official reports. Do we have any council committee reports this evening? Okay, seeing none, we move on.
Oh, actually, sorry, Mike. Um, I didn't know if you were going to make a comment about the committee of the whole meeting, but, uh, if, if you think it's prudent, I'm, if you'd, uh, yeah, if you think it's prudent, we can go ahead and try to schedule that committee improvement committee meeting.
Sure, absolutely. Kay, what's the calendar look like?
What are you looking at?
Um, next meeting's on the 2nd?
Yes.
Do we have anything at 6?
We do not.
Okay. Um, if it's all right with everybody else, can we put it for 6?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And again, that will just be a meeting to try to craft, um, language to add to our, uh, city charter preamble, um, on non-discrimination. Thanks.
Thank you, Danny.
Okay, would you please lead us through the reading of legislation?
Legislation for first reading, resolution number 3704 for first reading, resolution authorizing the city of Bowling Green to participate in the local park improvement grant program and to file an application and accept grant funding upon grant application Ordinance number 8695 for first reading. Ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move we suspend the rules and give ordinance 8695 its second and third readings.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes, the rules are suspended for ordinance 8695.
Ordinance number 8695 for second and third reading, ordinance providing supplemental appropriations for the current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Bowling Green, Ohio during the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2018, and ending December 31, 2018.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8695.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8695 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8696 for first reading, ordinance for cleaning of streets by special assessment. Ordinance number 8697 for first reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator and the utilities director to sell obsolete items no longer needed for municipal purposes by public auction and declaring an emergency. Legislation for second reading, resolution number 3703 for second reading, resolution authorizing the filing of a proposal and/or application with Ohio Department of Transportation for grants through the U.S. Department of Transportation Federal Transit Administration as authorized under federal transit laws as codified 49 USC Section 5311, financial assistance for other than urbanized areas and funds available from the Ohio Public Transportation Grant Program, executing a contract or grant for the fiscal year 2019, Ohio Elderly and Disabled Transit Fair Assistance Program, and 5339 and/or 5311 funding for capital and/or operating assistance, and executing a contract with the Ohio Department of Transportation upon grant proposal and/or application approval. Ordinance number 8692 for second reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for professional cleaning services for city-owned buildings. Ordinance number 8694 for second reading, ordinance granting easements to Columbia Gas of Ohio Incorporated for the Columbia Gas Bowling Green Streetscape Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zanfordino.
I move that we waive the rules and give ordinance 8694 its third reading.
Second.
And moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
The motion passes, the rules are suspended for ordinance 8694.
Ordinance number 8694 for third reading, ordinance granting easements to Columbia Gas of Ohio Incorporated for the Columbia Gas Bowling Green Streetscape Project and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President?
Mr. Zanfordino.
I move that we adopt the emergency clause for ordinance 8694.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8694 is adopted.
Legislation for third reading, ordinance number 8685 for third reading, ordinance authorizing the municipal administrator to enter into a contract with premier national staffing for temporary staffing services.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8685.
Second.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8685 is adopted. Ordinance number 8686 for third reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to advertise for bids and enter into a contract or contracts for lime sludge disposal services for the water treatment plant.
I move to adopt ordinance 8686.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8686 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8687 for third reading, ordinance authorizing the utilities director to purchase software upgrades from Aclara for the twax automated meter reading system.
I move to adopt ordinance 8687.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Um, Mike, could you remind us what they are reading? Is that water or electric?
I believe it's water. I believe it's water, I mean, you're correct. Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Kay, would you please call the roll?
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8687 is adopted.
Ordinance number 8688 for third reading, ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 2, Section 2.03 of the municipal charter of the city of Bowling Green concerning vacancies.
I move to adopt ordinance 8688.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Is this by substitution?
Oh, yes, it is, you're right.
Yeah, and I never got those back that were signed.
Sorry.
So, are we gonna?
Withdraw your motion?
Withdraw your motion to amend by substitution?
Move to, uh, withdraw the motion on the table.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, the motion on the table is withdrawn.
Oh, you, uh, Hudson, oh, I can do it. Uh, Mr. President, I move to amend ordinance 8688 by substitution.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8688 is approved as amended.
It's amended.
It's amended.
I'm, I'm sorry, I completely lost.
Amendment is approved.
The amendment is approved. Yes, thank you.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold.
I move that we adopt, uh, ordinance 8688 as amended by substitution.
Second.
Very good. Moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Now I will say that ordinance 8688 is approved as amended. Thank you.
Ordinance number 8689 for third reading, ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 6, Section 6.09 of the municipal charter of the city of Bowling Green concerning department of planning.
Mr. President?
Mr. Harold.
I move that we table ordinance 8689 until the council meeting on July 2nd.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Kay, would you please call the roll?
Robinette?
Yes.
Roland?
Yes.
Zanfordino?
Yes.
Osbacher?
Yes.
Gordon?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Jeffers?
Yes.
The motion passes, ordinance 8689 is tabled.
Ordinance number 8690 for third reading, ordinance providing for the submission of an amendment to Article 7, Section 7.01 of the municipal charter of the city of Bowling Green concerning civil service commission.
Mr. President?
Mr. Jeffers.
I move that we adopt ordinance 8690.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Kay, would you please call the roll?
Roland?